All right, thank you. So this is the January 3rd, 2017, meeting of the Planning Board. Happy New Year, everybody. So, not a lot on the agenda. First thing is subdivision rules and regs. I assume we don't have an update for this week, so we will pass over that. Excellent, master plan? Kathy, do we have an update on that?
Nope. Same thing. I'll get that RFP finalized. And that, yeah, that'll go out probably end of January, beginning of February.
We have no minutes to review, correct?
Correct.
All right, so we're A and Rs, and we have one, right?
Yep, we have one. You can either sign it now or at the end of the meeting.
You can sign it after.
Okay.
Clark Woods?
That is, we're gonna transfer that to the next meeting. The, so for the bond reduction and for the lot releases, that'll be on the next agenda.
Convenance, none?
No.
Bonds?
Yeah, the bond reduction for Clark Woods will be next meeting, yep.
Okay.
Needing a drink?
They're feeling really bad right now. Looking at this 8pm majority. All right, so duplexes.
Sure. Actually, if you don't mind, I'll just give you two updates on green communities and marijuana.
Sure.
Those are just the quickest. As far as the recreational marijuana regulations, as we had talked about at the last meeting, of posing a moratorium, you know, at town meeting. So, Town Council has drafted, and you have a copy of it. It's very generic, you know, and now we have to make it a little more specific to each community. Obviously, the only one we're concerned about is North Row. So, that, I'll have that probably for the next meeting. But the, it'll, the only change that probably has to happen on that particular draft is, on the 28th of December, the, some of the legislators took a vote and they've extended the, or prolonged, the opening, which was for recreational stores, I mean, stores selling recreational marijuana. Originally, that was, that was going to be allowed starting in January 2018, and they took a vote to extend that to the summer. I don't have the exact month, but...
This summer?
No, 2018. So they basically gave it a six-month extension. And, so, the, we prob, that was the, the sample that you have in front of you, or the draft language that you have in front of you, was written prior to December 28th. So, that, we just have to update that. So, that's, that's that, as far as the marijuana.
I just have one thing. I just wanted to ask, is it any more about marijuana, like, are you moving on? I just had to, I just want to add something.
It's your meeting.
Oh.
Not me.
I just wanted to add something. I just had a question. Kathy and I did go to a meeting in December about recreational marijuana, and I think she forwarded the slides to everybody. And one of the concerns that they kept pointing out during the meeting was towns that didn't have a medical marijuana bylaw. And on Slide 35, there were questions that they pointed out, that if you don't have a medical marijuana bylaw, you might want to ask your town council. So I was just wondering where we would stand on a medical marijuana bylaw? Because the way they are talking now is recreational marijuana would be zoned anywhere medical marijuana is. So if you're a town with no medical marijuana bylaw, that means it can, right now, I think it goes anywhere? Is that right, Kathy?
Well, I'm, if you don't have any regulations...
Yep.
So what we're proposing is a moratorium for a year to develop regulations.
Right. But I think what he was saying, too, is if you didn't have medical marijuana, even during the moratorium, you should look into asking a few questions to town council. Just to make sure you're covered.
But it's not legal, you're saying it's not gonna be legal till mid-2018? It's another 18 months before it'll be legal?
As far as when they'll be, right, when it'll be able to be sold?
So we wouldn't need zoning until next town meeting?
That's...
That one-year moratorium, all that all ties nicely together.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But what they said is anyone between now and then can come in and apply for medical marijuana, which will become recreational marijuana. So you just have to be okay with any of those applications that might be coming forward? And one of the zoning rules for the recreational marijuana is you can't deny anyone, any application who wants to be in the same area as medical marijuana. So if you open up your whole town to medical marijuana, and it happens between now and then, then that whole area is open to recreational marijuana. So they said, there are also limitations, if your town wants to take a vote, and it's a vote by election. But you can limit the number, you can limit the types, but he said if you didn't have a recreation, I mean, a medical marijuana bylaw, it might limit the questions you can ask, because a lot of them are based off of your medical marijuana bylaw. So if you didn't have that in place, you might not be able, like, one of the limits is you can't have any more recreational marijuana than you do medical marijuana. But if you don't have medical marijuana, how does that play into your town? And I don't know the answer. He just mentioned those are questions you might want to ask before your next town meeting.
I have a question, actually. Do medical marijuana facilities, you know, because most states do, you know, have progressed like this. They pass medical, and then they transition to recreational. Do the medical dispensaries tend to transition to recreational, or do they end up staying separate? Do you know?
In other states?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. I mean, I can certainly look into it, you know, by doing some searches.
Yeah, I'm kinda cur, I was kinda curious, because...
But I don't know. I mean, as it, just now, as it presently stands, in town, we have, well, we don't have any medical marijuana facilities, but there is a facility, a grow facility, or cultivation facility, that has, it received a letter of non-opposition from the Board of Selectmen over a year ago, probably about a year and a half ago. And they've made their way through the Department of Public Health, which is where the medical marijuana is, you know, is centered. So they've made their way through the process, I think there's three phases, and they've gone through all three phases. And so their, their next step will then be coming back to the town and applying for site plan review. And this is a facility that, land that this particular company is looking to lease on Lawrence Street.
Is that considered highway business? I was just wondering where it falls in our zoning.
I'm not, you know, I'm not exactly sure.
I think it's industrial.
He's far enough off of Route 9 that it's, that's...
Because he had that industrial overlay that he got approved years ago.
Where's Lawrence Street?
It's down by Peterson Gas Station, off of Route 9.
Okay.
Lawrence and Otis come together, like...
By the pond.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And then kind of where Armino's is.
Right, right.
Lawrence and Otis meet there.
Okay, right, thank you.
So Lawrence is a mix of, there's some residential, and then business.
Be good for a coffeehouse. Armino can open a coffeehouse.
I was, I was just wondering if as a board, we could just ask a question to town council or somebody about, how does that leave us open? If we don't have a medical marijuana bylaw going forward this year, would that leave us, leave us open to any repercussions? Because they kept stating it, and he stated it two or three times during the meeting, that it's something as a town you want to look for. And he actually took a poll, how many towns have a medical marijuana bylaw, and like, 50 at the meeting did, and 17 didn't. And he kept stating those 17, you might want to talk to your town council and see what repercussions this could lead to. And it might be nothing. I don't know the answer. I just would hate to not ask the question.
So I think the purpose of the moratorium, though, is so that we can put regulations into effect.
Right.
So hopefully that won't be an issue.
They said it could be still.
Well...
Between now and then, because medical is still open in your town. And if you don't have a medical, then certain things could still happen between now and then. The moratorium is only for recreational, it's not for medical.
Okay.
But I don't know if we have enough time to come up with a medical marijuana treaty now.
We've already tried medical, we've already tried medical marijuana in this town, and the citizens of this town were pretty darn clear on what they didn't want, so...
Right, but it's been two years, and things have changed.
It's, it was...
To be fair, I mean, as we know, town meeting is largely, to assume, make an assumption based on one town meeting vote, is not valid for subsequent, because the room tends to get stacked with people who are interested in other articles, and that the gun range one definitely drew in a certain crowd with certain beliefs, I guess, you know, in terms of land use and autonomy. So I would say we should come back at some point.
We haven't been able to pass anything.
We couldn't pass solar?
That was all the same meeting. They're all the same meeting.
Same people.
Every other year, everything's passed. Not saying that I would want to push this through, I just don't want to leave a loophole.
Is this understand, is it jibe with your understanding, or you take away from the meeting, too, in terms of message?
Well, but from what I, what I understand since then, based on this change that happened on December 28th, the, you know, there, there can be, there will be no sales. I mean, people can't get licensed to sell recreational marijuana now until the summer of 2018. So we will have a town meeting before that, which, because the moratorium basically will be, typically do it to the end of your fiscal year. So the moratorium would be till the end of, you know, June 30th, 2018.
Which coincides with...
Right. And anticipating that, you know, two months before, at the April town meeting, there would be some sort of, you know, bylaw that the town would be presenting. And, I mean, and if it turns out that there, you know, that maybe that there should be, because I mean, again, it's not, you know, it's up to the town as to whether or not they want to adopt anything medical or recreational, but, you know, you'd probably want to introduce it at that time. You know, if, if in fact, the town is in jeopardy. I don't, my understanding is that we're not, because, because of what happened on the 28th...
Okay.
...of December. But, you know, we're, you know, we're getting advisories all the time from town council, and, you know, and they're gonna write something up, up, you know, based on what happened on the 28th, so...
Do they know that we don't have a medical marijuana bylaw?
Oh, our town council, yeah.
Yeah, just 'cause...
So I think it's something that we can address. I would rather, I, I just don't know that we would be successful in first bringing forward a medical marijuana bylaw, then the following year, doing a recreational. Is there a reason why we can't address them together?
I think that's probably what, what you might want to do, if you wanted to take another crack at, you know, citing medical facilities. But, I mean, I, you know, I think they can go, they don't have to go hand in hand, but you can do them both at the same town meeting. Because again, nothing can happen with recreational marijuana now, sale of it, until the summer of 2018.
I'm hearing that Amy somehow got an impression, though, that something could slip in, because we're unprotected by...
It depends on if medical marijuana applications come forward between now and then.
I mean, we're, we're probably in our third year now with this particular facility...
Right.
With how long it's taken. So, I mean, I, I mean, that's how long DPH is taking to review these.
What I took away was if anything, an application for medical gets placed between now and next year, that medical marijuana's are gonna be, have first choice to become recreational. So all the medicals are gonna become recreational, and you can't ban that? And the rule is, anywhere the medical is, you can have recreational?
Well, I don't, I don't think the medicals automatically become recreational. But I think medicals, if they want to, they can also sell recreational marijuana.
Right. Which most likely they would, to make money. I know, but it just leaves you open. It just, I mean, that was the rule that, in the new law, is anyone who is medical can have first dibs to sell recreational.
But I also remember when the board took an informal vote of us, I think we were split on where it should go. I think there were certain board members who thought, oh, it's okay in this area, and other board members thought it should be in this area. So I think even as a board, there isn't consensus on just one area.
Okay. Well, the previous bylaw had it in place.
One of the things, you know, that the Board of Selectmen have made, you know, perfectly clear, you know, numerous times, and, you know, stating this at their meetings, is they are, if anyone came forward with a medical marijuana facility, whether it was retail or cultivation, anywhere in downtown or along Main Street, they would not, you know, issue a letter of non-opposition. So basically, it's, you know, that, it sort of arrives dead on arrival at DPH, if the town isn't supporting it. So, you know, I mean, as we receive new information from town council, I'll certainly, you know, provide that to everybody. And the, you know, and anything new that comes from, you know, our Regional Planning Commission also. Although, although our Regional Planning Commission is, I've offered to provide them information from our town council, because they don't have legal counsel, so they'll be getting the information that Copeland and Page puts out.
How does the letter of non-opposition work? And so if we, if we don't have a bylaw, and they're within their legal rights to kind of cite it wherever they want, then how does the...
Well, as part of the, the whole citing of a medical facility...
Yeah.
One of the requirements, the very first requirement is, is that you have to submit a letter, preferably of non-opposition. So it's not, it's not necessarily a letter of support from a town...
Okay.
But it's a letter of non-opposition, meaning the, the town fired this, so to speak, or that, you know, the Board of Selectmen, City Council, doesn't, doesn't oppose what you are proposing.
Right, and if you don't issue that, then...
If you don't issue that, the Department of Public Health, you know, right off the, you know, they have a check sheet and a score sheet...
Right, and their first one is...
Right. That, you know, it's, it's negative against you, because you, you know, you're not able to get that letter of non-opposition from a community.
But are you, or is the town within its legal rights to, to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yep.
So, okay.
Yep, that's all part, that was all part of the medical marijuana bylaw and regulations that were passed.
So even if you don't have a bylaw, you're not completely unprotected, like you are with solar, for instance?
Correct.
Very different, okay.
Correct.
That's interesting, I didn't realize that. Thank you.
Yep, so there's that, that's the very first step, is the letter of, that's not how it is with recreational, but with medical, that's the very first step, is the letter of non-opposition, that the community is, is asked to issue.
I didn't realize that, thank you.
So in this, in our particular case, the Board of Selectmen issued the letter of non-opposition for the Lawrence Street location. But they did say, and they have said it, we have had other meetings, George has participated in some of those meetings, where other companies have come in, looking at, you know, potentially a Main Street location. And they were told, you know, right off the bat, you know, from the town administrator, that the selectmen wouldn't support it. So, and, and they, you know, they'll go to another town, that they haven't pursued it here.
Okay.
So then as far as green communities, the staff did meet with Kelly Brown, who is the person that you all had met with. We had her come in and do a presentation at the, I think it was June or July, you know, last summer. And so Kelly came in, did a presentation to staff. The, the next step is, is moving forward, is at this coming town meeting, what we would be proposing, it's not a zoning bylaw, it's a general bylaw, it would be the adoption of the Stretch Energy Code. So the, the state will provide language to the town, as far as how that needs to be worded. And because the new code is, I think it came out January 1st, or...
Stretch Code.
Yeah, well, the new building code. They, they will provide, and they said probably by mid-January, they would provide language to the, you know, communities, as far as how it should appear on the warrant. So that, that's our next step. So we'll be proposing that at town meeting. And then Town Council will also be reviewing, because then the second step is, is whether or not, there was, there was four or five criteria, and one of the criteria is about, does your bylaw presently, not necessarily promote, but the, we, we have to make sure that our bylaw doesn't hinder large-scale developments. Even though we don't have a solar bylaw, we do have a research and development bylaw that that might fall under. So Town Council's gonna review that portion of our zoning bylaw. So, so we're probably gonna be okay in that, in that respect. If we're not, then at the following town meeting, because the town administrator just wants to keep, he just wants to go step by step on this, and not to overwhelm people, so just to go forward with the stretch code at this town meeting. And then if it turns out that we do have to propose a solar bylaw, then we'll do that at the following town meeting. But we think we're gonna be okay with the way our bylaw is written, or just in general, the way our zoning bylaw is written today for research and development.
So when you say we're, we're going to propose stretch code, is it we, the Planning Board, or we, the town, through the selectmen, are gonna propose it?
The, I'm not sure who actually will, will, we haven't discussed who would be doing the presentation. I mean, the Planning Board is, is the one that's leading this. There, there, at this time, there isn't any other board, you know, talking about this, but the, but it, but it will be a general bylaw. So whether it's, you know, myself, the, you know, town administrator, the building inspector, you know, as far as, you know, doing an explanation, but it would, I would think it would probably be the Planning Board, you know, making the pitch for it.
What's your idea with that?
So then the, the other two zoning amendments that I wanted to go over with you tonight is, you have a chart that's in front of you, actually, there's two tables, it's on one sheet of paper. And this is partially reflective of the conversations that we've had at previous Planning Board meetings. And then after the last meeting, we had talked about, you know, staff would get together and come up with some numbers for you to, you know, you know, some hard numbers for you to look at, as far as the changes that, that, you know, as staff, we're proposing. Obviously, it's ultimately up to the Planning Board. But if I can just start with the first table, this has to do with multifamily. And the, presently, if you just go across the chart, if we just do one district at a time, I think that'll be easier. So in the Business West District, you know, today, what you need is, there's eight units allowed by special permit. So for the first two units, you have to have a 20,000 square feet, and then for every additional unit over that, over your first two, you need 3,500 square feet. So the bylaw right now, you know, allows for a max of eight. And so basically, if you look at how much you, how much land area you need to do eight units, is you need a little under an acre. You need 41,000 square feet. And just as a breakdown, to give you a visual, that breaks down into, if you just wanted to look at how many square feet per unit, that translates into, so it's a little over 5,000 square feet, you know, per unit. So as far as the proposal, is we're looking to maintain the 20,000 square feet for the first two units, bump it up to 7,000 square feet for every additional unit over two, and then to cap it at six units. So not only are you decreasing the number of units, so, you know, you're decreasing the actual density, but you're also requiring additional land area. So you'll have less units, but it'll be on more land. And I think that that addresses the, the issues that I have heard from the board about, you know, the number of units, and also the appearance of, of the units. So...
Can I ask a quick question on the math? On, I'm not doing the math, but just the difference between, make sure I understand the chart. So between Business West and, so if you look at the first columns, square footage for first two units, the difference is 10,000 square feet, right? And if you go to the total square footage needed for eight units, the difference is 10,000 square feet. But the units, the square footage per unit for eight, for the downtown business is lower, so it would end up being even less.
Well, I haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
If, I'll explain to you what I did with...
Okay, all right.
Okay. So just staying with Business West, you know, keeping the 20,000 square feet for the first two units, doubling the size of what you, the requirement of what you need for every unit over two, so that, so 7,000 square feet, again, decreasing it from eight units to six. And so what you end up with is, you now need 48,000 square feet for six units, as opposed to, today, you need 41,000 for eight units.
Is this true that you need 8,000 square feet revised square footage per unit?
No, you don't need that. I'm just giving you a visual.
Okay.
So that's, that's, that's not anything that's in the bylaw, nor is the total square footage needed in the bylaw. But, you know, just to do out the math for you, that in order now, under what, what I'm proposing, you know, by bumping it up from 3,500 square feet a unit to 7,000 square feet a unit, and then decreasing it to six?
Okay, now I get...
You end up with needing...
Now I get the math on the second one, too.
You end up with needing 48,000 square feet to build six units. And so you end up, land area-wise, at 8,000 square feet a unit versus 5,000 square feet a unit. Does that make sense? So then with the downtown business, right now, you need 10,000, now, you know, think of downtown in general, sort of what the future of downtown may look like, because we don't have, you know, a built example of this. So today, you need 10,000 square feet for the first two units, and then same thing, you need 3,500 square feet, and again, max is eight units. So what you end up with, in order to build eight units downtown, you need 31,000 square feet. And that is, you know, 3,875 square feet per unit. So what we're proposing is, is no increase in the square footage for the units, because again, you're in the downtown, you expect to see density in a downtown, which was the whole premise behind this bylaw, when it was first approved. But we are proposing to decrease it, again, from, you know, eight units to six. So again, even though you're not changing the land area, by decreasing the number of units, you end up now needing 24,000 square feet to do six, as opposed to needing 31,000 square feet to do eight.
If you look at the, the one that Brasi did at the end, I can't remember the name, it was at Blake Street, the end of Blake Street, how many units are in that building, you know?
There's 12 units.
12 units in there. Because the, the feedback that I've heard on that is that it's pretty classy. And that's, that would not be allowed under this bylaw, am I correct?
Right. That was, that was a variance to begin with.
Right.
I mean, if that, if that's the dense, if you want to go more, I mean, I thought I heard less from you, but if you want to go more, I can rework it, but...
So basically, it's six units on a little over a half an acre of land...
Yes.
In downtown.
Right, in, in downtown.
And the reason that, the building that you're talking to at the end of Blake Street, George, is that it's three stories high. So do we have a limitation on the number of stories in downtown? Can you go three, four stories in downtown?
There is a height restriction. There is a height restriction.
In, in the downtown business...
45 feet.
45 feet. Not, there's, there isn't a number on the stories, but 45 feet, and I think that represents, it's 15 feet a story, basically. So that represents three stories. So...
So the real issue for downtown is, is parking. It's, it's not the size of the building, or the number of people, and it's, is there sufficient parking for it?
Yep, that's true.
And in the case of the building at the end of Blake Street, there's more than adequate parking there, even though there's 12 units in there.
Well, right. That, that one, I think, is a little unique, because again, it didn't, it was replacing an exist, you know, structure that was, I mean, I believe it was a former rooming house or hotel or something, that was, I mean, way back. So it was, it was replacing a structure, I think that people were very familiar with the scale of seeing, and the, they had the square footage, you know, to, to accommodate the parking. You know, had he not had the parking, you know, the ZBA probably would have, you know, decreased the number of units.
Sure.
Because you needed, I think, with, I think those are all one-bedroom units, so it's a space and a half per unit that's needed.
Well, I'm happy that we've decreased the number of units, but I still think, in Business West, at 48,000 square feet, you have six units on just about a little over an acre of land. An acre is like around 44,000 square feet, you're at 48. So...
Is that too high or too low?
I'd be interested to get the feedback from the ZBA to think if that's still too Do you think they think that's too dense?
I, I won't, I won't be meeting with them until the end of this month, so I planned on reviewing this with them.
I still think the six, I mean, when you think of an acre of land, and you have six units on it, it's still very dense. It's not a lot of land, you know, on an acre. So unless they have a tendency to go up, you know, make them more narrow and taller.
What about the development on the corner of Route 20 and Maple Street?
He...
The Tim Shea?
130 Main Street.
Oh, Tim had, well, he has a combination there. He has, because one of the...
Next to this, right.
Right. So one of the buildings is pure residential... Right. So one of the buildings is pure residential, and another one of the buildings has two residential units on the second story. So he, and that was the Business East, and I, I don't remember, so I think it was shortly after that is when there was a zoning bylaw change that the neighborhood had recommended.
Right.
So I, I'll double check, but I believe that Tim probably met the, you know, this original formula of the-
The acre.
Although, no, he had, but there's more than eight units there. I honestly, I, I'll have to check.
But it's a couple acres, probably, too. It's a big, big lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I have a hard time looking at numbers without visually, you know, using visual examples. It's just really hard for me to grasp what things are worth.
I know, it's a broken-
Well, the, the one to, if, if, the, the, the true visual that meets this bylaw, the existing bylaw, is on Westbrook. That development, Brody Way, it's called. So that's, and that's the one that people seem to react pretty strongly, or have strong opinions about. And that, that met the bylaw as far as the number of units.
Was that two acres over there?
He's got 16 units, if I remember correctly. He's got eight on each side, I think it is. Again, I, I have, they, they run together after a while.
Part of the issue with that is the height, too, right, because of the way that the lot-
The, yeah, some, yeah, some, some people have, have, you know, commented on that.
It's just visually more imposing, because it's-
Right, because it's higher up, yeah, yeah. And you see it from, yeah, you're looking up at it from Main Street.
So that's where it gets, you know, it's all so complicated, because it depends on the lot and-
Yeah, they just make it more narrow and taller.
Yeah.
One of the things that came out of previous studies in town was that the people wanted a variety of options for housing. And by restricting it, you're going against what people had said in the past.
I think if we eliminated it, that's what could happen.
Yeah.
But we're not eliminating it.
But you're restricting the ability to create that type of housing. And the, the issue, I guess, is that not everybody who rents wants to go into Avalon. And so you have to have some options for people besides that. And so I-
Not everybody who rents goes to Avalon. There's tons of places to rent in this town.
There are. But I, I think, I think, you know, I don't have a problem with the first one, Business West, because it's not a, it's not a dramatic increase. But for, for the downtown business, if they got the parking, I don't have a problem with eight units on a lot.
So I've been, just, George, I agree, I agree. I don't think anyone's opposed to this type of housing. I think they're opposed to the density, and that's what we're, and I've been driving around other towns, and I can see how they're doing it right in other towns, where they're just looking for more land. Or they're making a smaller number of units, right? So rather than just, you know, putting every piece of housing on that, that footprint that's available to them. So I think I've, I've driven around to other communities, and I can see that it's working. I just think we need to add more land and less units. It's not the housing.
If you, if you're looking at specific towns, is it possible to get information from those specific towns about what they're-
Sure, if I, yeah, if I knew what towns.
I mean, I was looking at, I mean, similar, that we've already talked about, is Shrewsbury. And then, I mean, I'd have to look at, I think it was, I don't know if it was Westboro that I was in, but I'll look at some of the other units and see where it was located, and I can email you. But I don't, I like the six units downtown. I just still think that the six units, I'd be interested in the ZBA's feedback. And I think what Leslie's saying is true, it's a pitcher's worth of thousand words. If you can visualize what six units would look like versus, you know, the eight we had before. So the applicant who came before us that was on King Street wanted eight units. It would mean just being, taking away two of them, but he's also building on what's decent land. Then there's a lot of land that isn't decent that's left open. So we talked about, I don't know if you can address that in zoning as well, which is, do you know what I mean? You might still have a parcel of land where the only decent part of the land, because of the topography of the land and the levelness of the land or whatever he has, is in this section. And then all of this is left, do you know what I mean? So they're, you're keeping all the units pretty dense over here. Can we address that, or?
Well, that, well, that's where you get it, your, your ratio of how many units versus how much square footage it needs. So it, you know, with these-
So each unit needs, like, so-
Well, no, not, well, yeah, each unit needs, you know, again, in, in the proposal, I've, I've suggested that you double what you need, which is pretty significant. So you have to double the land area that you need for, if you're building over two units. So, so the example on King Street, Michelle, not only, if, if this, if this was the zoning in place-
Yeah.
He would have less units, but he would also have to have more land area.
Oh, okay.
So, so you're, so you're not only reducing the num, because just to reduce the number of units and keep the same formula, you're still going to get the same look and feel, because it'll, it'll be, it'll be, it might be less units, but if you're not, you know, what you're going to allow, if you're not going to say it has to be on more land, you're still going to have the same dense feeling. I mean, and you're, multifamily by nature means townhouses.
Right.
Or garden-style apartments. I mean, very few people build garden-style apartments now, but, so I mean, you're- Like apartments one on top of the other, an Avalon, I mean, those are, you know, the, I think it's kind of like a 70s or 80s term, but it's basically an apartment complex versus townhouse, which is side by side, you each have your individual entrance. Yes. So, so you're, you know, visually, you're still going to see density, because it's, you know, they share common walls. But there will be less, fewer units on more land area.
Amy, have any questions on this one?
No, but what she just said sounds important, because a lot of complaints we heard were, had to do with grading, too, and water. So if you have more land with the less units, then you're not digging apart every square inch of the land. So it sounds like if you need more land per unit and less units on the land, it will also be beneficial for the neighbors who are complaining about drainage problems, or neighbors who have these huge high rises overlooking their houses. It just makes sense what you said.
So as far as drainage goes, though, one thing to keep in mind is that you're not allowed to increase the runoff from a piece of property, and if you do, the neighbors can sue you. So if, if somebody is building property, and in the process, before they do the final grading, it gets some water on the neighbor's property, I mean, that's unfortunate, but that's correctable, and it will be corrected, or else the developer will be sued. So that's, that's not necessarily a given, that when you build, you will flood your neighbor. As a matter of fact, if you do, you open yourself up to repercussions.
Did you say you're giving this to the zoning board?
Yes, I was going to, to discuss it with them at their next meeting, which is January 25th, 4th. And, and then, so then I can bring back, you know, you know, a summary of their discussion, you know, to your, you know, first meeting in February.
Okay. You want to work on the next one?
Sure. And as far as two families, that's the next table. Again, today, two families are allowed in the general residential zone, which is 15,000 square feet, 100 feet of frontage, and then 30, 15, and 25 for the setbacks. And, and that's, and again, that's allowed by right, unless you're a groundwater district, you have to get a special permit. But, so what we're proposing is increasing the lot size by 50%, so bringing it up to 22,500 square feet, but also increasing the frontage and the setbacks. So the setbacks, we're proposing an increase in the front setback from 30 to 40, and the side from 15 to 20, but leaving the rear at 25. And again, both in the GR and the RC, and I'll explain the RC in a second, but in, again, what, what I have summarized from your discussions is that, again, it's a, it's a scale issue. It's not so much being adverse to, you know, two families being built in town, but the, the size of them sort of have overtaken the neighborhoods that they are, are low, being built in. And so by increasing the lot size and increasing the frontage and increasing the setbacks, you're still allowing the size of the duplex, the, the chart or the table that I showed you at the last meeting, a lot of the duplexes that are being built now are a little over 2,000 square feet aside. So again, this still allows for that 4,000 square foot building to be constructed, but it's, it's going to appear differently, because A, you need, you will need more land area, you have more lot frontage, so just visually, you, you, there's, you know, there's more space on the street, which we thought was very important for driveways, because that's been a big concern, the driveway locations. The four, the four duplexes on South, on South Street, closer to town, have, continually have problems with those driveways. So, so more, so more frontage would give them, you know, more room for driveway turnarounds and so forth. And then setbacks from the front and the side, as far as how it impacts, you know, a butters. So, so again, it's not, it's not restricting duplexes from being built, and it's not restricting the size of the duplex, but it's requiring that they be built on a larger lot size. And then in the RC, the, you know, very similar proportion-wise, today, today you need a special permit, you know, not looking at changing that, you would still need a special permit. Today, you need 20,000 square feet and 100 feet of frontage. And what we're proposing is 30,000 square feet with 150 feet of frontage, and then the, you know, same increase in the setbacks, you know, increasing the front to 40 and the side to 20. So again, you know, you're still able to put that size duplex that, you know, is a very popular size, you know, not only in our town, but sort of universally right now in the suburbs, as far as the size of a duplex. You know, they're three, four bedrooms, you know, three baths. And, but again, allowing, you know, it to be set further back, have greater frontage, so that you've got, you know, the ability to have a better driveway location, and then again, setbacks from the butters.
I wrote that, but I don't know if that was Shrewsbury.
One man's opinion, I'm not in favor, but I think it's, it's too dramatic, an increase.
We, we had originally proposed double, and so, so, you know, I mean, I took that into consideration and went with less, but-
I think it's still too much.
Kathy, do you remember, I don't have my notes with me on Shrewsbury, what did Shrewsbury do on their setbacks? Amy's so good on notes, but she didn't have it on her notes either. Our unofficial record taken, didn't take the records.
Shrewsbury had, right now, well, what, what they did have was 125 feet of frontage.
Yeah.
And they increased it to 150. And they increased the side yard and the, and the rear yard setbacks.
Do you know what they are?
The, the side yard was 10, and they increased it to 30. And the rear yard was 40, and they increased it to 50.
What about the front?
And the lot size, the frontage went from 125 feet to 150.
The front, front setback.
Oh, no, no, the front setback stayed the same, I'm sorry, it was 30 feet, and they kept it 30 feet. And, and the lot area was 16,000, and they increased it to 20,000.
What zone was that proposed for?
Well, Shrewsbury has probably about 12 or 14 zoning districts. So this was in Residence B2, then in their multifamily district, then they have an apartment district, and a limited business district. And they increased, everything was increased from, all of those were 16,000, they went to 20,000. Their limited business was 12,500, and they increased it to 20, so everything now needs 20. Everything now needs 150 feet of frontage, and then the setbacks. So that was Shrewsbury.
So why did you decide to keep the, the rear setbacks the same?
We just, when, when we looked at all of the examples that we had provided, that never seemed to be an issue. Maybe you have heard differently, but we've never heard it as staff or at the, at the public hearings with the ZBA. The rear setback never seemed to come into question. So that's why we left it, it could be changed, but it's why-
Yeah, I'm asking just because Shrewsbury is so big.
Yeah, so that's why we left it.
That's huge, a huge difference, certainly.
Plus, I think, I think you'd want to look in the side setback, too, because 20 feet isn't very much. Especially if you're going to have something that's so big up against the side of your house. And maybe that's why they addressed the rear, if it's a neighboring, someone who's, like, behind as well. Okay, so can we absorb this for the next two weeks?
Yeah, absolutely, yep. And I'll, and I'll review, I plan on reviewing that with the, with the ZBA, too.
All right, and we've already dealt with vehicle sales and service.
Yep, so that's, that's what I had, as far as, you know, zoning proposals to, to review with you tonight.
So no subcommittee updates, we know the meeting is, when do we have to have our warrant articles done?
It's the beginning of February. I honestly don't remember the exact date, but it's, it's after your first meeting. Because your first meeting, I didn't bring my phone. Your first me, I think it's probably that Friday, your first meeting.
February?
Yeah.
It's late, it's the 7th.
Okay. So I'm thinking it's probably like the 9th or the 10th. But, you know, but that's, you know, basically, when the 10 administrator is looking to how many articles, you know, you'll be proposing, the rough language, so we just, you know, set up the framework for the warrant.
Okay. All right. Do we have an application for next time?
The, yeah, for the next planning board meeting, you have a public hearing scheduled for a common driveway on Green Street. And it's the existing house with, with a second lot, and they're proposing a common driveway to be shared by those two lots. And, you know, staff will do a review of that. There's a revised plan already that's been submitted, which I have not reviewed, it came in just before Christmas. Well, there'll be a new house, there'll be a second house. It's the lot, I mean, I, I don't remember the person's name, but if you're heading north on Green Street, right after Shunder's Field, it's the, it's the house right after Shunder's, Shunder's Field. So they have enough land area to do a second lot, which is already being, they're presently before the Conservation Commission, and then they'll be before you in, you know, at your next meeting, January 17th. So, so for your next meeting, basically, we'll have the Clark Woods subdivision reduction and lot releases. The Sturt Brook Estates is also, that's, no, excuse me, it's not Sturt Brook. Sterling Court, off of East Main Street, they're looking for a bond deduction. And then this public hearing, and then we'll continue the zoning amendment discussion. And then as far as what's on the next ZBA agenda, the January agenda, there's a continuation from their November meeting, which is a, an existing lot on Church Street, adjacent to one of the oldest- adjacent to one of the oldest cell towers, and they're looking for, as, as staff, we, we provided the applicant with guidance from Town Council that the, they have to meet the setbacks of the zoning bylaw that have to do with cell towers, even though that cell tower was not built under the cell tower bylaw, and they are, the applicant is, you know, not, not in agreement with that, and has, you know, filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals, so that was continued, so that'll be heard in January. And then the old, the new, there's only one new application, and it's for some additional signs at North Road Crossing. There's a group of doctors from St. Vincent that have rented, I think, three or four of the suites, in the, you know, where Margaritas and Applebee's, that portion of the development, in the L-shaped building, I'm not sure exactly which units are theirs, but, so they're looking to put up wall signs on the corner of that building, the, that faces Route 20, and that, that faces the ramp, basically Route 9. And then they're also looking for, so those are two variances, and then they're also looking for a freestanding sign to be placed on the property that advertises the St. Vincent's Doctors and Med, Medi Post wants to have their own sign, with the doctors, so, so those are all variances.
So then how many freestanding signs would there be on that property?
Well, that now, that would bring it to two, because there's the, there's the existing freestanding sign.
Right.
Little blue lights on it, and, and then this proposed sign.
Okay.
What's up with the, just an aside, you mentioned the cell tower, made me think of Carney Park, I haven't been there in a long time, what's up with the cell tower, though?
They, they told me, oh, guys, this was probably three months or so ago, this fall, that there, that there was a couple sites ahead of, of this, you know, of this, the building of this one, but once they pulled the permit to build it, it would take probably about three or four weeks to build, and that it would only be three or four days that the parking lot would actually be closed for the trails, because we, we continue to receive a lot of questions about that, access to the, to the trails.
That you can park at the building right next to it, a lot of people do that anyway, because the driveway took the Carney Park, so.
Yeah, you're, yeah, that's, the applicant, you know, the landowner has, you know, requested.
That people not do that?
Right, right, they, people shouldn't be doing that today, and, and I think he'll probably put up some additional signage, and, and we're going to put up signage, too, you know, notifying people when it's going to be closed, and to, you know, you know, not park at Pendleton Square.
Yeah, I was annoyed that people can't, like, drive up a driveway.
Yeah.
With this little.
To walk on a trail.
Right, exactly.
Adam Cheer, are we done?
Nobody has anything else?
Got to sign a plan.
Okay, we'll sign the A and R and close the hearing.
No, we can, we can close the hearing first, and then.
Yep, well, there's no hearing, you, you're not.
Or close the meeting.
Close the meeting.
Meeting's closed, all right, David, we're done.